At this time, we'll open the public hearing for public comment. Are there any proponents of the testimony? Mr. Hartman and then Dr. Bobby.
Pardon my interruption. My wife checking on me. I haven't been home for dinner yet. My name is Carl Hartman. I reside at 3478 Holy Ridge Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio 45245.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
So help me God, I do.
Wonderful, thank you.
Well, thank you. First of all, I think I would be remiss if I didn't thank Chief Dyming and his team. They have personally showed me professionalism and quick response to me and my family on multiple occasions. And I wish to thank you, and my wife and children thank you also for that. Okay, tonight, let's get into a little bit of the history. If you could have the site plan up, please. Thank you, Mark. The area on the back that goes through there is the old CGMP railroad. It was part of the interurban railroad that went through. Harrison Lane across the street was the extension of that. Went down, crossed Clough Pike, just about the county line. So that's part of the old CGMP railroad that went up through Amelia and all the way up through there. And so it's kind of interesting, we haven't searched for any relics in there, but there might be some old railroad spikes or something else there. But let's talk about the history. This site here was the home for W.J. Needles Plumbing Company for decades. Bill was a personal friend of mine. We were close. I lived in his farmhouse out in Judd Road for a year or so, and we went to conventions together and we enjoyed a Friday night beverage once in a while in that regard. So, Bill, but you know, and I actually, my firm, I had private practice in 1982, prepared the zoning change that went through in 1982. The plan that we had at that time was a very, very conceptual plan. No detail, nothing you see normally on a planned development plan. I guess unilaterally during the 1990s, the township changed the zoning. Originally, when this property was zoned to R7, R7 at that time eliminated multifamily from the zoning. Business 1, 2, and 3 at that time allowed multifamily. So the other designations in the business changed it so that they did not have that. They excluded multifamily. And so, you know, I think that if we, I don't fully understand how we changed this from B7 to a Plan Development 1 without a full development plan, and I think it was unilaterally done. I'd like to introduce our team tonight. We have representing Standard Wellness, Katie Hart. The Standard Wellness has a contract to purchase this property and has a contract to purchase that has an equity interest in the property. We have sitting next to her, the Troutmans. The Troutmans are represented by their LLC. Sitting in behind Katie is Greg Snyder, who is the architect for this project. To his right, yes, is Dolores and Larry Keith. Larry is, and Dolores are here to speak tonight to address what they feel has been the benefits of the products dispensed at this store. Larry and I have worked together on several things. He's an architect himself. One of the projects that we've worked on was the Perry Kelly Plumbing building up the street. And that was, it's a nice addition to the township. At this point in time, I guess Katie, you want to go first, or?
Sure.
All right. Katie will come up here and then we'll have the rest of our team contribute. And I'd like to have some time maybe after the end to respond to anything that's on. Thank you, Katie.
Please state your name and record for the, sorry, your name and address for the record.
Katie Hart, 2550 Detroit Avenue.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Not a ton to say about the zoning aspects of it, but we as a company, the Forest, we're very excited to be a part of Union Township. We are an Ohio-based company. We currently exist in Sandusky, Hickamburg, and Springfield. And we are welcomed and supportive participants of the communities that we exist in. We support parades, sponsor parades, sponsor events, health-based focused. We're very educational-based, so really happy to be here, looking forward to starting to build. Hopefully, we can get past some of this administrative portions of this. We are currently engaging local contractors to do the work. We look forward to supporting the community here and ultimately serving the patients of Ohio.
Thank you, Katie.
And happy to answer any questions at the end.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Larry Keith, 4775 Burt's Hall Road, Williamsburg, Ohio.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
As Carl mentioned, I'm an architect resident of Claremont County, but I'm not here to talk to you about the project I'm working on. I'm here to encourage you to approve the case before you. My wife and I have been medical marijuana card holders for about two years now. We both suffer from what I call elderly maladies, like arthritis, sleep disorders, things of that nature. We were both taking prescription drugs and over-the-counter drugs, all with, most with harmful side effects. We kept saying to ourselves, there's got to be something better out there, there's something different that we can do. Several years ago, we started experimenting with CBD oil. It, we had moderate success with it, and it was readily available at jungle gyms here in Eastgate, over the counter. Then, medical marijuana was legalized. And I got to tell you, it's been a godsend for both of us. Safe, effective, no harmful side effects, no addiction, if used properly. Currently, we have to travel to Madisonville area to buy our products. Hamilton County is a long way. We'd much rather travel to and spend our money in Union Township. So again, I encourage you to approve the case before you. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Greg, you want to say anything? We got the architect back there, the project architect. He's the one that came up with all those pretty pictures, and you note that. Thank you, Greg.
If you could please state your name and address for the record, please?
Hello, Greg Snyder, Lardier Group Architects, 431 Hillcrest Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio 45215.
You raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. As a, originally from Claremont County, it's good to do some projects here where I grew up. Matter of fact, my grandma lived about a mile from here, Mount Carmel. So very familiar with the area and obviously happy to be part of a project that I think would be of benefit to a lot of people. So, Mr. McCormick, if you could pull up the elevation, please, and talk a little bit about the building. The building itself, fibers in that building, kind of contemporary design. You'll notice on the rear, there is a little enclosed area. That's actually an exterior area for delivery. It's a secure delivery area. Product will go in and the garage door will come down and product will be moved into the facility from there. The building itself is very secure. Think of it not unlike a bank or a facility. There is a vault inside. I won't go into the details of that in a public forum, but there is also secured access from the waiting area to the retail portion of it. So conceptually, you can kind of think of this almost as a kind of a hybrid between a retail space, almost like a jewelry sales room, combined with a bank, with the Bag of Hells vault and the level of security that are going in here, and just a normal business, a pharmaceutical-type business. So very secure facility. I know that's probably what a lot of people want to talk about when we talk about dispensary in a local community. So all this is tied into a monitored security system. The facility on the exterior has adequate site lighting, always lighting the facades of the building, so there's no unintended access or people hanging around in the shadows there. We've also provided all the required landscaping to try to make this a positive presence in the neighborhood. Again, we already spoke to sidewalks and retention. So just wanted to bring up some of the facts about the building itself, which may not be readily apparent on a site plan. And I'm also open to answer any questions about the facility itself. I cannot speak to all the operations of said facility. I defer to Katie on that one, but I can't answer any questions about the landscape lighting and the building itself. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. On the report, or on the staff report, and Mark did that, there's five items in the recommendations. We find that all those five recommendations, we can resolve those, and we would like to have the ability to resolve those with staff. We think that, you know, the sign, like the sign was shown on the one drawing, it was obviously less than 10 feet. We can add a note, but we can handle that. You know, and I'm probably one of the older people here in attendance tonight, but I have my own engineering practice here in Union Township, started in October of 1970. And so I went through a lot of the stages and saw a lot of these zoning things. And actually, I prepared the plan, my firm prepared the plan in 1982, the very concept, concept plan that changed it to B7. If it had still been B7, we wouldn't need it to be here tonight. But, so therefore, like I said, we can find that the recommendations, we can work that out with staff, and we think that, we hope you agree and can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. This time, is there any other proponent testimony for the public hearing? If you could please state your name and address for the record?
It's David Haas, 4413 Mount Carmel Road.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
I own a house straight across the street from this area. I can almost guarantee that if they bring this in, you're going to lose probably almost every neighbor there. There's enough drugs in Claremont County, especially in that area. We don't want it. You know, I don't want it. I know I'll move and sell my house. It's going to bring more trouble than we need there. There's already a million cars come up and down here 90 miles an hour. So we're going to have more traffic. We're going to have people that we don't want to be hanging around there. And yes, you can just secure it all you want, but banks are secured. They get robbed all the time. What's it going to say, someone's not going to try to rob this place because there's idiots out there that's going to do this? That means the police department's going to have to be there a lot more. It's just going to bring a lot of trouble. And I can't speak for my neighbors, but I can almost guarantee at least five of my neighbors will move if this happens. I mean, that's just the way it's going to be. You're going to lose people. It's going to cause more problems, and there's going to be, I've been down to Madison Avenue because I clean parking lots for a living. I've cleaned that parking lot, and I've seen people that go there. I've seen people try to get other people. I see them sell stuff right out in the parking lot after they go get it. That's what's going to happen. You're going to have people selling, going next door to Ike's or to the corner, and they're going to sell to somebody who's going to buy it, because most people do anyway. And, you know, it's great for people that need it. I'm all for it. I'm just not for across the street from my house. I got grandkids, my kids come, I don't want them to see, you know, be around that. I don't want to have, be worried about who's going to come, or who do I got to worry about going to get shot across the street, or am I going to get shot, my wife going to get shot because some drug deal went wrong? It's just, I don't think it's a good idea. And me personally, my wife personally, we'll sell our house, we'll move. We'll move out of Union Township. We love where we live. We've been there 10 years. My mother-in-law owned it before we did. We bought it from them. They was there 10 years. So, I mean, I mean, that's all I got to say on the matter, but I really believe it's going to cause more crime, there's going to be more trouble, and I'm just not going to, I'm not going to be there for it. We love living in Union Township, but we will move. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. This time, is there anyone else has public comments for this evening, for this hearing?
Please state your name and address. George Martin, 1466 US Highway 50, Cincinnati Challenge Ranch.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will be brief as best I can, but not too long. A little bit about myself, I have been involved in counseling, in volunteer, and paid and professionally, since I started volunteering at Claremont County Youth Services in 1985. I've been a Claremont County resident since then, 1985. And then I got involved as a volunteer and a mentor with then-named Teen Challenge Cincinnati for over 20 years. And then, out of a calling, I became the executive director, left the corporate world in 2000, the beginning of 2002. I have counseled personally and in group, men, young, teenagers, young and old, easily 2,000 men in the last 20-plus years, and over several hundred women. Since I Challenge Ranch, used to be, just a new DBA, was Teen Challenge Cincinnati. And we've got a men's facility that started downtown, 1410 Vine. Next year's our 50th anniversary in Cincinnati. We've been in Claremont County since, sorry, 1980. And I founded a women's home first down in Milford, which lasted only three years out of the senior leadership not being able to maintain, maintain it. But I started then a women's home in Miami Township, which is in 2009, which is going great for women who are pregnant, non-pregnant. We are residential-based, the men live there, the women live there, and for six-plus months, take on basically, exchange old lifestyle of addiction for a whole new lifestyle. Having said that, like I said, I've got easily 40-plus thousand man-hours in counseling men and women in addiction. And with that, my goal here is to inform, not, but I want to say outset, not in any way to limit proper distribution of medication in the right format and the right way to people that need it. Let me bring up a couple things. That I believe that, first of all, the distribution center will, in terms of a profit-loss center, will bring about much more loss than profit it will to anybody in our community here. And that the addictive properties, along with its physical, mental, even spiritual downsides, outweigh any kind of usefulness in a broad or readily accessible distribution to our society. The Ohio Medical Marijuana Card eligibility is already too broad. I'm going to point out some things. And I believe that we'll look back on this, and it won't be long, that we will absolutely regret what we're doing here. And if anything, I would like to see, in terms of this information I bring, that there would be some encouragement to look further in terms of at least limiting how much we have of this in our community. The marijuana industry in Ohio is actively marketing marijuana as a solution to the opioid epidemic. But it has proven not that, they're marketing it as a safe and effective substitute for opioid, but it is not. And that is, the studies have shown that marijuana is a significant risk factor in the increased and medical use of opioids. And that the opioid overdose fatalities, sorry, have increased in Colorado and other places it's been legalized, that by an incremental percentage. I want to talk about accessibility. This is off the ohio-medicalcard.com website, and it's a beautifully done website in terms of technically. And the accessibility, the accessibility is, as they say, is Ohio's, has got 18 years or older, and, but under 18 of age, if there's an assigned caregiver who's at least 21 years of age. And it's interesting, I just make a note that, tell me if I'm wrong, that in Ohio, to go ahead and just get a HUTPOL, you've got to be 21, right? Okay. I just found that little interesting. And that, but you've got to also get the, to get the medical marijuana card, you've got to meet with a doctor and get approved. And the site goes on, explains beautifully what is a medical marijuana card, and then they go on to, go on how to get it, and you can even get it online. My concern is that the accessibility is open to not only fraudulent access, but unwarranted access, which I'm going to talk about in a minute, including even straw buyers and in this whole thing. And I have even individuals I brought with me that would testify firsthand of how they had a lifestyle of that. I want to, look, they talk about, and there's obviously, in terms of THD, we're not talking about CBD, which is legal. CBD, by the way, cannabonol, which is not psychoactive in any way, I've got no issues with, and which I occasionally use for some aches and pains. But it can be used as a pain reliever to a degree, anxiety reliever, and to a degree, help with insomnia. But what I'm talking about is the THC, the high, the Delta 8, the Delta 9, the synthetic THC's that are being brought out, is all these answers for our problems. And I just want to mention that one of the things, and again, they list a lot of serious on this website, things that it will help with and that you need to get the approval for with everything from AIDS to ulceritis. But some of the things that are in there I thought were interesting, including fibromyalgia and Irritable Bowel Syndrome, which I dealt with occasionally and deal with a diet, Metamucil, and tried to lower my stress, but not necessarily getting on marijuana. But I found it interesting with fibromyalgia in terms of, also the website, I want to say, they beautifully take you to it. And again, that's ohio-medicalcard.com. You can go to it, and it's step-by-step, even step one, step two, step three, step by step takes you through, okay, now here are the things that it's approved in Ohio. And you can click on, you know, whether it's AIDS, or whether it's chronic pain, or whether it's fibromyalgia, and you click on it and says, well, here's the things that you'd have to address with it. And it literally gives you the, you need, you need, it's this, this, and this. And I know from, in fact, again, from the thousands of people that I've interviewed, both men and women in council, that when we had the big suboxone problems and Goshen and everything like that, and all around, they knew exactly what to say. Exactly what to say. I've got some of my students, exactly, I mean, the exact words to say, the clinical words. So then the doctor, well, okay. And, you know, under fibromyalgia, they just, they list, it's this, this, or this. And I decided, you know, because I've had some students before, like, you know, I've got aches and pains because I take guys that are addicts. I take women that are addicts. And an addict needs things to help them cope with. It's just one of the many things. But I looked up fibromyalgia on, I thought this was pretty credible, on the Mayo Clinic, Mayo Clinic website. I did this today. So it's pretty recent, Mayo Clinic. And fibromyalgia, by the, let me go back. So in the medical marijuana, medical card, you can do this online. You can do this, you know, it's easy, step one, step two, step three, they'll take you right through it, online. Well, it's interesting, in the Mayo Clinic though, and they tell you what to say. In the Mayo Clinic, fibromyalgia, they're saying for fibromyalgia, you have to have a physical test, Mayo Clinic, physical test right there. So any physical tests, they test whether it's your upper region, right region, left root, right root, and your axial region. And then they want you to say, in Mayo Clinic, they say, but, and you should also have a CBC, complete blood count. Unfortunately, due to some medical issues, I get those a lot. And they also want you to do some other tests that I don't even, I can't even pronounce it. They want you to do a thyroid test. You're not going to be able to do that online. And also some different tests. But then I read further on, and I'm going to finish with this part, and it says, under pain relievers, I am quoting from the Mayo Clinic website, opioid medications are not recommended because they can lead to significant side effects and dependence that will worsen Also, how is abuse of this going to be monitored? How do we know that, you know, Sally, Tom, Mary, you know, getting the medical card, whether it's warranted or not, again, I am not an opponent, I'm not an anti-med guy to those that need it? When properly distributed through like a pharmacy? How will we monitor abuse? How will this affect, further affect the workplace? Workplace injuries, performance, attendance? How will this impact law enforcement with driving impairedness? I am telling you, and again, Malcolm Gladwell in Outliers is often quoted, and in his book he talks, he says, for someone to be considered an expert in something, they need to apply that skill or trade 10,000 hours, minimally. I have upwards of 50,000 hours, one-on-one and group counseling, people in addiction. And a lot more hours, maybe, counseling mothers and fathers and sisters in grief and burying them. And I am telling you this firsthand, I am the canary in the cage, that marijuana is a gateway drug. It is the gateway drug. Something may take it over another five years with something synthetic, that's easy. And let me show you something here in terms of, remember how, I mean, tobacco. Remember tobacco used to be good for pregnant women? They used to advertise that. And then, I mean, for those of us that are slightly older, God bless our age, when they were promoting it even more and more, and then it got pushed back on tobacco promotion because the young people are starting to smoke. We don't want to promote it. You don't see any of that anymore. Well, this is off the medicalmarijuanadispensaries.com. I love this. Delta 8 cherry cubes. It's a dietary supplement containing THC. Wow. Chill, chill square gummies. Oh, Delta 8 THC with CBD. What's the difference between Delta 8 and Delta 9? Delta 9, Delta 9 THC is traditional THC. Delta 8 is nothing but a synthetic version of that. That they still don't even know what that can actually do to the human being. The difference is that Delta 9 is slightly different in that it's less of a high, but still, you have the same effects. You have the same, other than the high, the level of euphoria. You still have the same effects as regular THC, in difficulty with coordination, slowed reaction, anxiety, increased... increased anxiety, including memory loss and when used repeatedly firsthand, anxiety encroaching even into a psychosis, a state of just walking psychosis, paranoia. More, how about this? CBD gummies, look at this. It's great. Good for all the kids. Here's, I like this one. This was THC also. Pure Vita, makes it look like a vitamin tablet, Pure Vita. New delta nine THC vegan gummies are here. I can't wait till they come out with a keto version of it so I can get on it. So, and here it is, get your online card quick, and he's even discounts. Get online, online. Gentlemen, gentlewomen, gentlemen, there's something more than nefarious happening here and has been happening. Unfortunately, I do this for a living, and it is unfortunately, for way too many years, to see way too many families destroyed. You have to look at the trajectory of things. What do we want, what do we want this township, what do we want this county to look like in three, five, 10 years? Just like taxes, you can't roll them back, they're sticking taxes from the 40s. Again, I am not anti-med. But the process and the methodology of this is nothing more than white collar men competing with the illicit drug trade. And this is nothing more than the precursor to allow distribution when things are decriminalized. Why set ourselves up for that? Why let the horse out of the barn? I beg you seriously consider this. Not emotionally, as thoughtful men and women in terms of downside, in terms of downside. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
John Bacon, they call me DeeDee, 4164 Fossetia.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got it?
I do.
Thank you.
So it's all about people. I've been serving in this community now 28, 28 years as a pastor, working with people at various needs, seeing people in their various struggles. And it's concerning to see some of the things that have happened in our community. As we're talking history, I think it's important to remind ourselves and maybe just push pause here, to remember that in the 90s, Purdue Farmer came out and they told communities like ours, the medical community like ours, they told us, hey, we got a non-addictive drug that's FDA-approved that would not be addictive. And it's a miracle drug that's going to give you your life back to many. It's a miracle drug that's going to have ultimate testimonies of people that say to change them forever. And that's what they pushed. And then we had the mess created by Oxycontin that devastated a lot of communities and affected our community quite significantly. Oxycontin then grew to its cousin heroin, and we just heard the report on now fentanyl. This smells the same. It smells like, as being said, people who don't see our community as individuals, but instead see them as units of profit, all in the name of helping them, which is sad because people are hurting and people need help with their pain. I get it. But the way it's been done and just the promotion and I just ask that we consider taking a pause and really consider that and consider the testimony of our canary in the community who may appear to you like out there. But a lot of times it's those guys on the outliers that see things as they are. The prophet in the wilderness, warning. And I'm worried about the trends of our community. This is a great place to rear our kids, is a great place to serve. My church has served and taken it upon themselves to be a light in this community, to help wherever we can, and this does concern me. This does concern me. I ask that you remember that I believe it was your predecessors that approved a strip club there in Mount Carmel many, many years ago, and we remember how that turned out. And at the time, I'm sure the arguments were, oh, it's going to bring business and it's going to bring good, but did it really? So I ask that the trustees stand by their name. You have the trust of our community, all members of our community. You're called to protect the innocent. You're called to punish the evil doer and bring him to justice. And you're called to provide an environment where good people can flourish. And consider that in this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this time that would like to speak on the public zoning case?
I just want to address, I'll say my name again, right?
State your name again, just for the record.
Katie Hart, I do.
Katie Hart, thank you.
So I just want to address a couple of things. From the safety perspective, we are a neighbor. You know, we are the same as a neighbor, a neighboring business. People are outside too late, you go walk next door, you call them. Or a neighbor who's having a party too late, which we close before what I would deem as too late, 7:00 p.m. So we're, we're not a noisy business. We, in our operation in Sandusky and Springfield, we've never had an incident breaking, robbery. We've not had any incidents that we have to address. I think our, our type of business actually, because of the required surveillance, we're under 24/7 surveillance that is monitored by the Board of Pharmacy. We deter that type of activity. And of course, we don't want people loitering in our property or in our parking lot as well. So we would be with the community from that perspective. And we also think that it removes the need for, there was a mention of sales going on, on the streets. That's part of, you know, the medical industry is focused on medical sales and trying to eradicate that type of activity being, going on. I can't really speak too much to the other concerns raised because it sounds like those concerns are more with the rules that the Board of Pharmacy, the state of Ohio, has defined and or the process for which qualified conditions are identified. But of course, our industry has a ton of stigma surrounding it. We understand that. We see that on a daily basis, and it is a fairly new industry. So we hope that continued research will show there is, for every piece of research that you see as a proponent for the industry, there's also the research that is against it. We have seen so many success cases. We have, you know, patients that we also have hired that have multiple sclerosis that have, this has changed their life. My mother is a cancer survivor, she's in Florida, which is also a medical state, and this has improved her quality of life significantly. So again, we are a part of the industry, but not the ones who write the rules and identify how things need to occur within that industry. The Board of Pharmacy is very controlled. I will reference the delta eight comment. That is what I would call right now a loophole within the way the federal rules are written. We don't sell the delta eight. That is, like, forget his name, Mr. Martin, I think, mentioned. That is not a naturally occurring cannabinoid within the plant. Delta nine THC is a naturally occurring cannabinoid within the cannabis plant. And that is what our products are created with and sold. So we don't participate in the, what is seemingly becoming rampant, delta eight component. And again, like I mentioned, we focus on education. I think a lot of the stigma around the industry is that we've had many, many years of education in the manner of marijuana is bad. And we're just recently, with the legalization per state, being able to focus on the benefits that the plant can provide. So we are very education-focused and we hope to help continue to combat that stigma. I think that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello? I'm Robert Murbin, 546 Branton Lane, Cincinnati, Ohio.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got it?
I do.
Thank you.
So I'm kind of an interesting in-between with this whole thing. One, my wife, my son, and myself live in this neighborhood where the proposed development is going in. And at the same time, I am also the Director of Education at Cincinnati Challenge Ranch, where for the last nine years I have personally taught and counseled roughly 300 men that are seeking freedom from substance abuse. During that time, counseling and teaching individuals and groups continuously, when being introduced to a new student and walking him through his journey to freedom, I continually find out that where it began for my students was with marijuana use. And for many of them that have progressed to harder and harder, more destructive drugs, marijuana use actually continues to be a part of their life while they're going on those harder and harder drugs. And I do think also it is interesting that this proposed development is going into a neighborhood that is full of single-family homes and is about a quarter mile or so up the road from a Catholic elementary school. Again, as Mr. Martin alluded to, I am not speaking against the legal and responsible distribution to individuals who need it. But what I can tell you as an individual who personally has worked with individuals coming out of substance abuse for the last nine years, teaching them on a daily basis, counseling with them, crying with them, helping them to come up with plans to better their lives, that this will open the floodgates to things that Mr. Martin alluded to, that we have to step back and take a long-term, big-picture look at what this will open the doors to. You know, one thing I was taught by my pastor several years ago as a new Christian, is that everything leads to something else. And I know from personal experience in teaching over 300 men that the beginning of marijuana use for them led to something else. And I can stand here before you tonight, along with Mr. Martin and others, the pastor that just spoke, this will lead to something else. And so I plead with us tonight to take time and consider what we want the future of our community to look like, my community specifically, it's right where I live. And I personally do not want to raise a son, he's three, gonna be four in January. I do not want to raise him in a culture where more and more moral and ethical issues are coming into our community because we've opened the floodgates. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, is there any other further proponent or opponent testimony? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dolores Keith. I live at 4775 Birdsall Road, Williamsburg, 45176.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
So have you got it?
Yes, I do. I come from a little bit different background in that I'm also a healthcare provider. And I've had some really serious illness. In 2018, I almost died. My husband took me to the emergency room at midnight. Yes, I was feeling just horrible, but I didn't have the energy to get up and go. If he hadn't taken me, I would not be alive the next day. I was in kidney failure. My intestines had ruptured and I had bowel matter in my gut. To say this was painful would be an understatement. And the consequences of that was a loss of a year of my life. I lost 75 pounds, all my hair. And this was something that I had struggled with, with irritable bowel syndrome all my life, but I had no idea that I had diverticulitis, colitis. And I had this serious infection, and I was in and out of the hospital on IV antibiotics. The interesting thing is that I'm of a Celtic background, I'm Irish. Guess what? Opioids do nothing for me. They do not relieve my pain in any way. In fact, they gave me fentanyl before a procedure and said, you should be asleep now. And I said, well, I'm not. What are we going to do? And they couldn't proceed. So the long and the short for this is, is that pain control was my motivation to find out more about these type of medications. I'm not a person who in my life has taken medications because I was always pregnant or nursing a baby. I have 10 children, one set of twins. I have nine grandchildren. And I'm an International Board Certified Lactation Consultant. And so those two things, marijuana and, and my profession, don't exactly mix. But my son, Kevin, was an uncontrolled epileptic. We had tried every drug there was to try. He had seven medication failures. And somebody said to me, you know, there is this form of marijuana that might stop his seizures. But we didn't have any access to any of that here in Ohio. So my son had brain surgery to stop his seizures. They removed three-quarters of the hippocampus out of the middle of his brain and his right and left temporal lobe. Now, one would think, we were told, that we would know within two weeks after the procedure, if not, it was successful. It was not successful. My son was left with a continuing case of epileptic seizures. He still seizes every single day. He doesn't fall into epileptic status anymore, which means that you seize, convulse, until you die, unless somebody intercedes. And we've had three episodes of that prior to the brain surgery. But now he's on medications, he's reasonably stable, and he only has seizures first thing in the morning when he wakes up. That piqued my interest when somebody said, hey, have you heard about this? And then I heard about this little girl in Colorado who was getting CBD, and it was stopping her seizures, but she couldn't take it out of the state. So the family moved to Colorado. So one day, my son had one of these seizures where they sometimes go on for three or four days at a time where he just vomits continuously. He can't keep a seizure drug damp, he can't do anything. The only choice is to medicate him with a rectal suppository, which by the way, $550 per dose and insurance will not pay for it to stop his seizures. And then he's unconscious for three or four hours, wakes up, and the process starts all over again. So I said to him one day, you know, I have some of this THC/CBD mix in the refrigerator in the basement. Could you just try putting some of it under your tongue? We've got to do something to stop these seizures or you're going to have to go to the hospital. Lo and behold, God was watching because I put this in this kid's mouth and he didn't have any more seizures. He went upstairs and ate dinner. His food stayed down. I think both Larry and I were in a state of shock. We couldn't believe what we were seeing. We'd been through every medication hell, an open skull with refrigerated skull in the refrigerator, or a piece of the skull refrigerated for a week, between the time they opened his skull and they removed part of his hippocampus. That's part of the procedure. It is horrible, absolutely horrible. And the patient's not allowed to have medication because they want them to seize as much as they can. He set a record. University Hospital didn't know what to do with him. And so after this surgery, they thought they had succeeded. Well, they had not. We fought with them for a year, until I got in a plane and flew him to Mayo Clinic to find out what they had done wrong. And they had created a whole new seizure bed for him in his frontal lobe through this accident. And he grew up as a healthy, normal kid. He's thirty years old now, but he still has this affliction, and he will all of his life. Without the ability to have this, he has no life. For myself, this has controlled the pain that would bend me in half, and I still function. I don't get high from this. I don't take enough to make me unconscious, or infect my ability to do anything whatsoever. I take enough to stop my pain and absolutely nothing else. And I also have arthritis, and the days that I have missed taking this at bedtime, I have a heck of a time getting out of bed, just putting the weight on my legs. So to get a card, you have to go through a fairly rigorous program. I think things got relaxed during COVID, and you could do some of this renewal online because they didn't want to do face-to-face meetings. But when I got my marijuana card, I met with an internist who sat and talked to me for an hour and then looked up my records on Epix to verify what illnesses I had. It was not pulling something out of the sky. He made recommendations of what medication I should take, which strains or cultivars would be most helpful for me to reduce the inflammation in my gut and in my joints. And damn it, it worked. There are dispensaries all around. They're not going away. If one has an argument about the use of this medication, then you need to take it back to the state and deal with it on that level. My son's neurologist encouraged us to go this direction because he didn't know what else to do. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, is there any further public comment on this hearing? Mr. Hartman, let me ask you. Please state your name and address for the record.
John McGraw, four-six-zero-four Blainfield.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Just real quick, I'm not here to argue the merits of what this product is, but the people presenting this case I have respect for. And, but in this case, I'm just wondering, are they using good judgment as far as where you want to place this business? I mean, it is a fairly residential area. I realize Mount Carmel, Tabasco is a busy road, but there's a school right down the street, there's a lot of single-family homes. There's probably a better spot, especially people who know real estate, could probably locate a place that would be a much better location for this type of business. And I'm just wondering if they've given it a hundred percent full thought, is this the best place to go? And I just know, in my experience, in the past eight years, we've tried very, very hard, step by step, to move the entire Mount Carmel area forward. And I just don't feel like this is a good step forward for the Mount Carmel area. And some of the towns they mentioned that they have businesses off, I believe I heard Springfield and Zanduski, these aren't exactly towns up and moving. Springfield's got a lot of issues, a lot of issues. So I don't think being right in the middle of a mostly residential area with a school right down the street is probably the best place that I would pick. And if I was advising them, I would say, "Hey, let's look around and see if there's a better place for this business." I'm also looking at the elevation, this is just a minor point, but it seems like there should be like brick or stone or some other materials in that elevation. I can't really tell from the picture exactly what that's made out of, but I don't have all the staff reports like you do, but just my advice, if you are in a loud building, it should have some more upgraded materials on it. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hartman?
Thank you. I realize the subject of marijuana is a very controversial and an emotional issue. However, I think people smarter than me have looked into this and feel that there is a medical benefit if you have the right substance. What you buy on the corner of the street is not gonna be what you buy in your facility. This is gonna be under a controlled thing. It's not somebody who grows it in a grow lamp in their basement and distributes it that way. This is not that type of operation. What we had here before was a large metal building that was industrial zoned. This property has been industrial zoned probably since nineteen fifty-nine, before it was changed to B seven and that. And so therefore, you know, it's, I think, an appropriate use. The traffic on Mount Carmel, Tabasco Road is, makes it not your typical residential community anymore, we know that. But you know, with the security measures in place that they have, as I understand it, like I said, people smarter than me have looked into this and have just determined that there are medical benefits. We had Dolores giving us her personal story, and I think that's, thank you, Dolores, that was very heartwarming. And so I would encourage you to approve this. The conditions that Mark has placed on it, we can take care of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Is there anyone further at this time for public hearing on the zoning case? All right, seeing no further public comment, we will close the public comment portion of the zoning case.
Chairman, can I ask some questions?
Yeah. Do you want to do that now, or do you want to introduce your?
I'd actually like Katie to come back up to the podium.
Should've been a one-topic meeting, huh?
Yeah. So you drive down here from Cleveland today for this?
I did.
Was that, what, four or five hours?
About three forty-five.
Okay, that's a long haul. Hey, so I will just have a couple of questions, just specific, kind of to business operations. So in addition to the medical marijuana, what other types of products are you gonna be retailing, like hats, t-shirts, bongs, rolling papers, pipes?
We don't currently, so at any of our facilities, offer t-shirts, hats, those types of things. We do have papers or cartridges, you know, the mouthpiece to go with a cartridge. But those are typically the max of our additional offerings.
So the rolling papers and the cartridges? Okay. Also, I'm curious about how you, I guess, work around financial restrictions. My understanding, you can't work with banks, maybe I'm wrong about, I'm correct if I'm wrong, I'm certainly no expert here, I've just been doing some research, trying to learn. You can't take credit cards, debit cards? So are you cash-only, or kind of help me understand how it works?
No, so actually, from a banking perspective, things have actually opened up pretty significantly since it became legal in Ohio. Of course, your typical larger federal banks still are a little questionable, but we typically work with local credit unions in the locations that we're in. Here in Ohio, we're through, we typically use Wright-Patt, is the bank. And as far as debit and credit, Ohio has expanded to allow debit and credit usage. So we have the functionality to do that, as well as an ATM on-site for people who would prefer to use cash.
Okay, great. And last I thought of, and I thought of this just during, I guess, earlier testimony, I don't suppose you take medical insurance, or does medical insurance?
Not yet, unfortunately.
Okay.
Out of our control. We would love to, but...
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Chris Hicks, he has it memorized, Paul, four, one, four, Woodford, Cincinnati, Ohio, six, five, two, five.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. And I didn't hear anybody ask the question, maybe somebody was going to, but I'd like these people to address this question. Is, and if she would listen.
Miss?
So she could possibly address this question. I heard two other people bring it up. Why on earth would you try to locate this business? I hear a lot of stories about the medical stuff and the, "How it helped me, how this helped me." But why on earth would you, especially you, Mr. Hartman, as somebody that's part of Claremont County's culture and history, come in here and want this to be in the middle of a bunch of single-family homes right down the street from a school? Did it not cross your mind that you should have looked for a location that was remote from single-family homes and remote from a school?
Mr. Hicks, please direct your comments to the board.
Okay, Mr. Logue, I get it.
It's hostile.
You're hostile to me every time I get up here. And maybe that should stop, and we'd have a much happier world. Maybe a little less of always being hostile with me would be good for these meetings. But I'd like to hear these people address, why on earth, as community, how could we trust you as community partners in Claremont County and in Union Township, when you think it's good judgment to try to put a pot dispensary place in the middle of single-family homes and right down the street from a school? I'd like somebody to get up there here and answer that question and not tell me about how marijuana helped them with their ailment. That's the question I think needs to get answered here tonight. And I'm a little ashamed that you guys didn't ask the question I'm asking.
At this time, does that conclude our public comments? Thank you. To conclude public comments? Mr. Hicks, you have order. Since you've not spoken, I'll bring you up, yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm super nervous about this.
Okay.
My name's Elizabeth Harnsworth. I live four-one-four-three James Drive.
Just raise your right hand, I have to swear again for the record, sorry. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
The way I see it, I ask myself, "Who made cannabis?" And my answer is God. Man-made pharmaceuticals, God-made cannabis. It's a plant. It is in the way you use it, it is in what's in your heart and how morally you are and the decisions you're making for your life. But I have come across so many children who use cannabis for, because they're very sick, not recreational, we're not talking recreational, we're talking medical. So when I hear that it stops seizures dead in their tracks, when seizure medicines do not work with them, when I read this right here, this came off the government website for medical cannabis, the use of it for children is allowed if you have a doctor, you have parents, and you have a very sick kid. They have to prove that they're sick to the doctor, and the doctor has to okay it. I don't see how any other people should get in the way of that, but there are rules to entering buildings, have to have the child, have to have the card that the doctor proved of. There are very stringent laws in Ohio. So when a kid has Crohn's disease, epilepsy, or other seizure disorders, I'm reading off of the government website, where these are the approved treatments, this cannabis is approved for these treatments, a lot of kids that are sick have to move to other states to get the treatments. But because Ohio opened up the use for child, for minors, the seizures are a big deal with kids. But my point is, in public school, there are children that do need to medicate, and they have to go to the nurse's office. And it's not smoking, it's like a gummy or some kind of oil. So I am advocating for allowing it so that it's a treatment, possible treatment, if my kid gets cancer, if my kid has spinal cord disease or injury, because looking to the back, you might have something against it, but looking forward to this generation, it should be an option for moms and dads who have terminal illness kids, who have Tourette's Syndrome, traumatic brain injury, and all of this has to be proven between that doctor and these parents. It is something that I would say is God's medicine and should be allowed as a choice. Thank you for bringing me.
Thank you. All right, this time we'll close public comment. So open it for board comments. We can seek, and if there's any questions that we need to bring, we can by all means be able to bring someone up for a question or to clarify anything during board comments.
I mean, as you were moving second first and...
Yeah, yeah. So we're being asked for seeking a motion to approve the Union Township zoning case, plan development. We have a motion?
For what? Approve or deny?
Yeah, approve or deny or modify. We got that motion?
So move?
I'll second that.
The motion was to approve?
Yeah, he made the motion to approve. So is that?
Open for discussion.
Just open for discussion, just to get us open for discussion.
Do you want to go first?
Do you want to have any?
Go ahead. All right, I'll go first. So for, you know, perspective and context, I started doing some research on this to look at federal law, was more familiar with state law on the matter, because I was part of the, I was in the General Assembly when we passed the medical marijuana bill, and then also studying through our zoning code. So I kind of got a four-point kind of presentation, if you will, or discussion. So the first part's gonna be about the federal law, second part's about Ohio law, third part's gonna be about our zoning code, and the fourth part's just gonna be like a five-point bullet summary. So first off, just a definition, I got all this information from the DEA's website. Definition of marijuana. Marijuana is a mind-altering psychoactive drug produced by the cannabis plant. Pretty basic. There's a quote, "The Controlled Substances Act places all substances which were in some manner regulated under existing federal law into one of five schedules. This placement is based upon the substance's medical use, potential for abuse, and safety or dependence liability," unquote. And I think a key word here, having to do with marijuana, is potential for abuse more than anything else. And Mr. Chairman, also, I don't typically just read from notes the way I'm doing this, I'm just, because I got a lot of material here, I just think it's gonna work out better than me just trying to evaluate it. So I want to discuss it very briefly, just give some examples of these five schedules that are on the DEA's website. I'm gonna start with the most benign or the least concerning, which is Schedule Five. So just a couple of examples, just to put things in perspective. Antidiarrhea medication, analgesics, cough medicine, basic stuff. So then Schedule Four ups the ante a little bit, you got Xanax, Valium, and Ambien. And these, gee, there's a sample, there's hundreds out on their website, if you want to be, you know, look up any particular drug. And I pointed these samples just because some of these are household names. A Schedule Three drug, then, some examples, again, Tylenol with codeine, anabolic steroids, and testosterone. The next one is a direct quote from the DEA website. "Schedule Two drugs, substances, or chemicals are defined as drugs with a high potential for abuse, with use potentially leading to severe psychological or physical dependence. These drugs are also considered dangerous," unquote. Some examples of that, again, this is Schedule Two. Vicodin, cocaine, methamphetamines, methadone, Demerol, Oxycontin, Fentanyl, Adderall, and Ritalin. Surprised me to see Ritalin on that list. Schedule One, here's a, again, a direct quote from DEA website. "Schedule One drugs, substances, or chemicals are defined as drugs with no currently accepted medical use and a high potential for abuse." Examples, heroin, LSD, marijuana, ecstasy, and GHB. GHB is the date rape drug. So in summary, on the federal portion of this, like heroin, LSD, marijuana's a Schedule One drug, and it's illegal for any purpose, including medical. Now for Ohio law, so a little history on this. So back in twenty fifteen, there was a failed effort put on by the pot people in Ohio to try to get recreational marijuana legalized. That failed. During the polling for all of that, medical marijuana was polling favorably with the public. So the pot people were gonna go back to the ballot with their own medical marijuana language. And this, of course, the medical marijuana was a stepping stone, obviously, to go to the full recreational, like, you know, Colorado and a few other states have. So what happened was the General Assembly stepped in to work with the pot people to strike a deal and come up with legislation. So the theory is that, well, if the public is gonna legalize this, you know, let's put some controls on it and make it more the way we want it, from the perspective of the General Assembly, rather than the way the pot people want it from their perspective. Of course, they're still gonna come back with a full-blown recreational legalization at some point, they're gonna try that again. at some point, they're going to try that again. So what I did is Citizens House Bill 523 and 131st General Assembly, this was back in 2016, I voted no on the bill. I was part of the, you know, I was at, you know, I was sitting at the table having a discussion on all this. So what I did is I pulled out just, you know, I guess about eight or 10 bullet points on the bill, on the bill, kind of what it does and doesn't do, or what it allows or disallows, and I pulled out stuff that was just kind of interesting or more really relevant to Union Township. So it permits a patient on the recommendation, that's a key word, recommendation, as opposed to a prescription, because you cannot get a prescription for marijuana, recommendation from a physician. Now physician, what does that mean? You have to be an MD or a DO. Recommendation of a physician to use medical marijuana to treat a qualifying medical condition. So when we passed the bill, we listed 22 qualifying medical conditions since then and left it open-ended for the Pharmacy Board to approve additional ones. I believe three more were approved since then, I'm not sure of that. So there may be like 25 conditions that are currently approved, but I'm not certain that's the case. It considers a person who has been fired for using medical marijuana to have been fired for just cause and generally ineligible for unemployment benefits. Prohibits the cultivation of medical marijuana for personal use. Prohibits the smoking of medical marijuana, however vaping is permitted. Authorizes a municipal corporation or a township to prohibit or limit the number of retail dispensaries. Prohibits a cultivator, processor, retail dispensary, or laboratory from being located within 500 feet of a school, church, library, playground, or park. The Act permits only, say, the Act, that's the bill that passed, got signed into law, the Act permits only the following forms of medical marijuana to be dispensed: oils, tinctures, plant material, edibles, patches, and any other form approved by the Board of Pharmacy. It prohibits any form or method considered attractive to children. Gummy bears were mentioned tonight, which would be in that category. Plant material may not have a, this is a $10 word, tetrahydrocannabinol, that's THC, may not have a THC content of more than 35%, and extracts may not have THC content of more than 70%. So to put that in perspective, so I did a little research, I didn't get this from the DEA's website, I was trying to figure out, so what was the THC content, you know, back when I was in college? And it was like 3% to 4% back then. So today's marijuana is 10 to 20 times more potent than back in the 80s. The last bullet point I got here is the possession limit is a 90-day supply is what patients are allowed to have without running afoul of state law. So but regardless of Ohio law, all of this is illegal under federal law. And that's the background and history, which now brings me to the specifics of our zoning So gentlemen, what I want you to consider is the Union Township zoning resolution, Article One, Section 120. And Section 120 has eight subsections within it, and of those eight, I want to point out two specifically. So 120, Section 120 reads, "This resolution is enacted for the general purpose of promoting the public health, safety, comfort, and welfare of the residents of Union Township." So subsection five of Section 120 reads, "To encourage the creation of a strong sense of community identity." Subsection six, "The creation and enhancement of a strong sense of place." Which brings me to, and this was mentioned tonight, about, we had biker bars back in the 80s. We had, you know, some of you might remember Vic's Bruin Q. It was a big shoot out there and that place eventually got shut down. Then we had the strip joints that moved in. There was rumors, deja vu. I was one of them that was personally outside picketing these places and to run them out of town. Eventually, we succeeded in 2011. I don't want to be seeing Mount Carmel or anyplace else in Union Township going backwards. So think of the message, additionally, gentlemen, think of the message that these places are sending to our children. Advertisements for bongs and other drug paraphernalia are already showing up in our mailboxes. We know that marijuana is a gateway drug to the more powerful and deadly addictive drugs. Also consider then Section 130, and I quote, "In their interpretation and application, the provisions of this resolution shall be held to be minimum requirements adopted for the promotion of the public health, safety, and the general welfare. Whenever the requirements of this resolution conflict with the requirements of any other lawfully adopted rules, regulations, ordinances, or resolutions, the most restrictive or that imposing the higher standards shall govern." Well, those higher standards are federal law, which states that medical marijuana is illegal. Consider Article Six, Section 614, and I'll quote, "Any use which is not specifically," where is specifically? "Any use which is not specifically permitted is prohibited." Being that medical marijuana is not a regular retail establishment, it was carved specifically into Ohio law with highly restricted and highly regulated, cannot argue this is just any retail establishment. Also consider the Higher Vice Code 3796.29, and again, I'm just quoting the relevant portion of this. "A board of township trustees may adopt a resolution to prohibit or limit the number of cultivators, processors, or retail dispensaries." Well, gentlemen, we've already done that. Ohio law does not require that a special resolution be passed specifically naming marijuana dispensaries in order to prohibit those businesses. Therefore, our Section 614 prevails, and again, I will quote it, "Any use which is not specifically permitted is prohibited." In my opinion, approving this zoning change would be a clear violation of our zoning code. Additionally, it would arguably make this board an accessory, if not accomplice, to a host of federal crimes. Now I'm going to sum up and conclude, I got about five bullet points here. Like heroin and LSD, marijuana is a Schedule One drug that is illegal under federal law for any purpose, including medical. Number two, medical marijuana has proven to be a stepping stone to recreational marijuana. Number three, marijuana is well-known to be a gateway drug to more addictive and deadly drugs. Furthermore, the perceived societal acceptance and advertisements for drug paraphernalia sends the wrong message to our children. Number four, medical marijuana dispensaries are arguably in violation of multiple sections of our zoning resolution, including Article One, Section 120. They are antithetical to the general purpose of promoting the public health, safety, comfort, and welfare of the residents of Union Township. Article One, Section 120, Subsection Five, "What medical marijuana brings to Union Township is the antithesis of a strong sense of community identity." Article One, Section 20, Subsection Six, "They are contrary to the enhancement of a strong sense of place within Union Township." Article One, Section 130, "Marijuana use, medical or otherwise, is clearly in violation of federal law and the higher standard referenced in this section." Article Six, Section 614, and I'll quote, "Any use which is not specifically permitted is prohibited." The Higher Vice Code 3796.29 does not require a special resolution specifically naming marijuana dispensaries in order to prohibit those businesses. And finally, number five, approval of a medical marijuana dispensary would arguably make this board an accessory, if not an accomplice, to a host of federal crimes. Therefore, gentlemen, I am urging rejection of this proposal. And that concludes my remarks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, so I agree, I should have asked the question earlier. Ms. Hart, can't force you, is there any chance that your company would find a different site away from the school? And you don't have to come up, you can just answer.
The microphone's got to be able to hear.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I apologize.
The way the site selection process works is typically a company will apply to multiple locations, and that's submitted to the Board of Pharmacy through their very stringent process. And they will actually go through the due diligence of analyzing the sites from a compliance perspective, so to ensure that it is that 500 feet away from a church or a school, et cetera. And then depending on the type of selection, it'll either be a lottery selection and the site will be selected based, or sites will be selected based on that, or an assessment of the location, the traffic, the feasibility of that location. So when they, in this most recent drawing, it was a lottery. We did apply to multiple locations, and this was the one that was selected by the Board of Pharmacy.
Oh, Board of Pharmacy, okay.
Yes.
I didn't realize that. Okay, so is there any way that you would be willing to work with the township to not be, find a different site away from the residential community or and/or the school as well?
We would be willing to, but unfortunately, the Board of Pharmacy, the license is granted to this specific site.
Got it, okay, perfect, yeah, thank you, Ms. Hart, I appreciate it.
Shall I say?
Oh, no, that's all I got.
Quick follow-up question for her.
Then just make sure to come back.
Okay.
After you're done.
For her?
No, for me, for my company.
So your topic about de-licensure, that sounds like a long process, goes through the Board of Pharmacy. How long is that process for retrospect? And tell me, what's your familiarity with the, again, on-site selection and the moratoriums that are put in place on different locations and why Union Township is something that you were able to even receive a site for?
Sure. So the process as a whole, this last round, I would say we're probably close to the 12-month mark, so the, there's a process typically four to, or three to six months that the applicants are able to prepare their documentation and submit to the Board of Pharmacy. Then the Board of Pharmacy has, I think they typically aim for 30 to 60 days, it typically will go past that to make their selections, and then they have final due diligence based on those selections to ensure that they meet the compliance. So as far as this location, we did go through, and I think Mark might have mentioned, we did have the appropriate zoning for the parcel directly adjacent, but that unfortunately was, the way we submitted the zoning application, we referenced both parcels, but because the building was inadvertently shown on the incorrect parcel, the zoning certificate that we received from Union Township was, although it specified both parcel numbers, I think the intent was that it was for that smaller parcel or skinnier parcel, which unfortunately was not the parcel on which we were granted the license by Board of Pharmacy.
Okay.
Hence why we are here.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did I miss a few, did I miss a question?
Yeah, well, partly, I'd back it up a little bit more as far as, it's my understanding, again, we've heard a lot tonight, and probably an hour and 10, 20 minutes of commentary that is, is important to hear, community feedback, but tonight's venue is what we're being asked to do. Does this fit the zoning requirements for a retail business? And is that retail business a permitted use in plan development? And from what I heard earlier from community feedback, and that's why I'd love to continue to hear more community feedback, but it's my understanding, and I think you stated it in the Higher Vice Code there, about the moratorium, but the time to decide on these businesses that are currently applying has already passed. You know, that's something I want to ask Mark and Susan, engage the community with, but if in discussion with our legal, I mean, the short answer is that in our zoning resolution, as early as 2016, when the Higher Vice Code passed, we could have taken action as a board, prior to this board, to pass a moratorium that prohibits medical marijuana dispensaries. The township could have passed that prohibiting the cultivation, distribution, or sale. And that's within township under Ohio law, but because that has, was not previously done, it's not applying here. So that's part of my question, how do you get to the site selection when this is already, like, you know, Union Township doesn't have a moratorium in place, or that's through the Board of Pharmacy, like?
Correct.
That's part of my question.
So as part of that application process, we engage a legal team to assess the local ordinances, whether there's a moratorium, et cetera.
Yeah, okay, okay, all right. Thank you.
You got more? It's all good. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so I get it, it's a very emotional topic, pastors speaking, people for it, medical testimony, I hear it loud and clear. Mr. Logue's right, this is not a vote of yes, I'm in favor of marijuana, medical marijuana, this is not a no vote of I'm against medical marijuana. And I, we've got our law director sitting over here, Mr. Conover, we've got our administrator right over here, I want both of you to interrupt me if I'm wrong on anything, you're not going to hurt my feelings, interrupt me. But so from my understanding, so I've done, tried to do a lot of research leading up to tonight's vote, is, does this business and does this build, does it meet all the legal zoning requirements? It is not, do you like marijuana or do you not like it? It's, does it meet the requirements set for by our township? And so, you know, talking in depth with our legal team and with Ms. Ayers, our administrator, from my understanding, if we vote this down, you know, we're kind of stuck in a rock and a hard place. We are going to get sued, it's going to happen, probably. And it will cost hundreds of thousands of dollars because our legal team will be fighting your legal team. And our legal team is telling me, we will probably lose this case. And so, again, I ask both of you to interrupt me if I'm wrong on this. And so if we vote this down, we're going to be taking the residents that live in Union Township, your tax dollars, probably, and it's going to be caught up in litigation and hundreds of thousands of dollars to fight this. And after we fight it, spending your tax dollars, we're going to probably lose if we have a crystal ball, based off the, you know, the advice of, that I'm being given. If I vote yes on it, now we have a medical marijuana dispensary, and, you know, and I know a lot of those, some of you folks don't like that. So I'm being asked the question, does this meet the zoning requirements in Union Township? And based off my zoning director, based off my administrator, and based off my law director, who are the smartest people in this room, in my opinion, they all tell me, yes, it does. What choice do I have? We vote no and shoot this down? I have to think reasonably and logically, and what's the best use of tax dollars? It's going to be, we're going to be fighting with a lot of money and a lot of time to fight this, when in the end, we will lose, in my opinion, based off what I'm being told. And again, I asked them to interrupt me if I was wrong on anything I just said, and they haven't. So I don't know what choice I have. The question at hand is, does this meet our zoning requirements? It's not, do I like marijuana or not? So that's all I got, go ahead.
Well, to refocus that, I mean, I heard a public comment tonight about the brick or stone style facade, and I did hear Mr. Hartman's identify that they're agreeable to the five recommended modifications. So that's one, you know, that's to refocus it, talk about it. I hear where you're going, and I hear where you're going, and I hear with the moratorium, the time has passed to be able to put something in place that would prohibit, but I think that that begs the question when we, let's look what we can do moving forward. Do we put something moving forward that we actually take the, you know, board's time and the staff's time to engage community, get feedback, and look at what those next steps are? Ms. Ayers, Mr. McCormick, as far as, you know, what are the appropriate steps to be able to further, you know, if the community, if the community interest is not to allow medical marijuana dispensaries cultivation in grow locations, or whatever, you know, is needed there for distribution, then we need to be able to take those actions. Again, I mean, unfortunately, we can't unwind the clock and go back to 2016 and pass a resolution that predates their 12 months of their application and where they currently are. That's the legal opinion that I've heard as well, so just to refocus that, it is, you know, brick or facade? Is there anything you want to comment on, Mr. Becker, as far as the zoning of it, brick facade? facade, the landscape, to look at the overall package it is, or?
What is the material for the building and the package?
Mr. McCormick, what's the stake for the material of the building?
I'll answer that one.
Can you come up, if we have a couple of questions for you, we'll, yeah, you're the architect, the architect to come up, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you. Please state your name again for the record.
Yep, Greg Snyder with RDA.
Okay, yeah, so what's the material that you have?
Fiber cement siding.
Fiber cement sliding?
That's correct.
Okay.
My understanding is that is appropriate per the zoning ordinance, is that incorrect?
That's how it's been viewed up to this point.
Thank you.
And you have cedar planks on the rear.
Cedar planks for the security enclosure at the rear, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, that is what we have historically had through.
This, this case came in roughly within the first couple of days of when I started working here, so the staff here had been working with the applicants for, I don't know how long.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know when they started the design process and all that, but I did see that, again, like Ms. Kate said earlier, the 12-month application process.
Yeah, our involvement with the design here has been since February this year at the least, so this has been a long process, with a lot of vetting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's, as I'm in my mind kind of reviewing other proposals that we've approved or we've seen over the years, they do typically have a brick or stone facade for, you know, aesthetics. So, yeah, I would support making that modification to this proposal.
Yeah, and I know with that, I know we have fiber, the, would you say ceramic fiber board?
Fiber cement, yes, hardy blank, if you would.
Yeah, the hardy board, yeah, I mean, we've had that on, thinking of the Dollar General and a few different business locations on 125, so I know that's, but if you're asking that, is that something you consider to look at, any brick or stone type of facade?
Again, I would ask if that's a requirement of the zoning ordinance itself, it would be our preference to stay as designed.
Mr. McCormick, is there any room for that to work through for any minor modification with it for administrative review, or is that?
So, yes, there are things that could be dealt with in administrative review. The zoning resolution itself does not contain the reference to the building materials, it's the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And in my opinion, the comprehensive plan and the way that it's being used here is not the way that it's, and then the comprehensive plan is usually intended to be used as a guidance document.
Yeah.
Not as a, not as a resolution, and here they've been using it in terms of a resolution. They're not the same type of document.
Okay.
And so there are changes that need to be made to the resolution, and that only have been made in the list. At the same time, you know, the materials are not in the resolution, the material issue is not in the resolution, and that's something that's been commonly cited as part of, like in the staff reports, from the comprehensive plan.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Doles, you have any questions? No, okay. All right, well, gentlemen, thank you. I said, yeah, I'm just trying to stay, stay on the topic here as far as, so, yeah, it's going through this, the application, looking that it has met the submission requirements, you know, as required under Article Six, Section 684, 686, 1130, 1131. The determination that the proposed amendment is consistent with the spirit and ten of the zoning resolution, which it's a retail business and zoning calls for, and plan development. And we've not heard anything for any other additional zoning impacts or adjacent property impacts due to a zoning constraint. It's kind of very similar to the prior zoning case with the water runoff, there are certain things that are within scope that we have control on. So I've got no further comments at this time. So we're being asked, gentlemen, to, in accord to a Section 680, 687 of the zoning resolution, to either enter motion of approve, approve of some modification, or deny the applicant's request to move, to approve a major amendment to an approved PD Plan Development District. Do we have that motion?
Have you already made the motion?
Yeah, do we have that motion? Yeah, we already made the motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
We had a prior motion.
Yeah, just open the discussion.
Is this modifying the motion?
No, not modifying, just, I was just, I was just going back to the motion that we had, open the discussion, and so now we can.
Do we need to modify it?
It's my understanding that the motion on the floor is to approve subject to the modifications that are listed in the staff report.
Correct, yeah, correct.
So that is pending before the board. If you would like, I know we've been back and forth about the stone, you could choose to amend that to add an additional condition if you choose to do so. We've had some discussion about it not actually being in the zoning resolution for a requirement, but what is pending before the board is to approve subject to the modifications that are listed in the staff report before you.
So are we adding to the staff report, or adding the additional stone that we just talked about?
Not at this time, the response I got from Mr. McCormick as far as the response to the comprehensive plan being utilized to previously make those minor modifications is something that doesn't seem to support the legal challenge.
Okay.
So we can close discussion, we'll call Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
No.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, we've got comments from the board. Let me just hit just a couple up front for us, okay? This is just fresh on my mind with, again, the discussion with the, one, public hearing, we really had the same thing happening there in the first hearing case and the second hearing case, something that is outside essentially, in my perspective of it and from talking with the experts, legal counsel, et cetera, the scope of what we're looking at, we're looking at the resolution. But we've already talked resolution, and I, I just want to talk bigger picture, you know, medical marijuana, so there is the, there is the ability to put a moratorium in place, and I think that maybe, you know, we want to hear from the community, and we want to have Mr. McCormick and Ms. Ayers, you know, push, you know, strategically into that direction of what's the best way to have community feedback on that. Obviously, they're already doing things like doing an RFP for, you know, technology tools to help us with community feedback, so I'm not going to expect anything overnight, but, you know, I think in general, this is something that could be years, not now, but could have been years in the process, because I believe that the Higher Vice Code was first enacted in 2016 that allowed a location like Union Township to be able to put a moratorium in place and say, we do not want it here in Union Township, we do not want it in Mount Carmel, et cetera. So I just, I'm interested in getting community feedback, so if there's a general sense from the board, that's all I'm asking for, to empower Ms. Ayers and Mr. McCormick. I'm seeing some head nods. Sound good? Okay, sounds good, all right, thank you, because the other topic that comes to mind on that, and they'll put that as a question of, as you kind of get, you know, more sharper on that and what's in place, but I believe you walk into Jungle Gims, there's hookahs and bongs in there, right next to the cigars. I know, I know I've seen hookahs, so, I mean, it's kind of a question, I've heard that comment tonight, it's like, there's hookahs and bongs in there. So, you know, does this, do we make it, you know, just know what we're getting into as far as what, again, is in the scope of the board and the powers that the Higher Vice Code have, have given. All right, gentlemen, I'll hand it over to you, I just want to get that first one off the top. Go ahead, thank you. Mr. Becker?
Yeah, so, you know, going back to the marijuana discussion, I really, I really did appreciate the debate we had, you know, both sides of this issue, you know, coming forward, the multiple perspectives, I really, really appreciate and enjoyed that. I was just wondering if anybody noticed the, with the medical marijuana facility, when I inquired about what retail products are you selling? And she said rolling papers, okay? Rolling papers are, well, rolling papers are not illegal, but rolling papers are for smoking marijuana. Smoking marijuana is illegal, medical or otherwise, under state law. Why are they selling roller papers? Obviously, it's to smoke it, which is illegal. Just wanted to point that out, I don't know if anybody noticed that as well. Also, I think that is all I have, thank you.
As I just have to segue part of that, and I'll do my normal announcements here, but I see those at Jungle Gims too, you know, and pretty much any gas station, so it's, to what extent? So anyway, we'll look for the staff and look for feedback.
You can smoke tobacco with them.
That's right.
But they're not selling tobacco at the marijuana shop.
I, yeah, I don't believe that it's smoke, I think they said that there's not, it's not smokable, and Chief Vigley has given me the look too, because he probably interacts with any of some of these concerns that people come up with crime, et cetera, but to my knowledge, at least what is presented, it was not what you're thinking of, the stories of, you know, rolling and smoking something.